Today is Tuesday, June 4th at six o'clock. And this is a regular meeting of the Trinidad City Council. Would you all please rise?
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I start the meeting, I have some rules for the audience for protocol during the City Council meetings. As always, please remove your hats and mute your cell phones if you have one. Private conversations away from the meeting agenda should be kept to a minimum and should not be loud enough to cause a distraction to the proceedings. Only speakers recognized by the presiding officer will be allowed to speak. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Anyone not adhering to this request will be removed from the meeting. Thank you. Item one, roll call. Debona?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trahell?
Here.
Ogultry?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Creago?
Here.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have additions, corrections to the agenda? And then, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Shu?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. Item number three, policy items and stat reports. There is nothing listed, but is there anything?
No, no.
Okay. Item four, petitions or communications are overwritten?
There's none.
There is none, okay. Item number five, consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda. Item eight is approval of the regular meeting minutes of May 21st, 2024. Item five B, approval of bills totaling $1,410,416.73. Item five C, approval of payroll for May 23rd, 2024 through June 7th, 2024. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. Item six A, public hearings. Public hearing of an ordinance amending Article 7 signs of Chapter 14 of the Trinidad Land Use Code to include language previously contained within the Trinidad Municipal Code regarding murals. The hearing is now open. Anybody to speak for or against? Ms. Ehr.
As was reported previously to City Council, there was language omitted from Chapter 14 when we adopted the Land Use Code. And so this is just simply reinserting the language previously approved by City Council regarding murals.
Anyone else? And then, the hearing is closed. Item eight, one, second reading of an ordinance amending Article 7 signs of Chapter 14 Trinidad Land Use Code to include language previously contained within the Trinidad Municipal Code regarding murals. Do I have a motion? Second? Second. Call the vote, please. Debona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, there is none. Item eight A, resolution authorizing retirement plan with record-keeping investment and fiduciary services through One America administered by Edward Jones and Associates and terminating the employer-participation agreement administered by Colorado Retirement Association, also known as the CRA, for all eligible city employees. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm really excited to go out and talk about this tonight. I won't take too long to comment, but
Take your time.
It's exciting for our employees. We started this process with Edward Jones a good year ago. It's taken us that long. We discovered things we didn't know about Colorado Retirement Association, mainly that they make it very difficult for you to leave. We weren't anticipating that. When the police department moved from Fidelity to Edward Jones, it was very, very quick. This is a very long, drawn-out process. So we have a resolution. That's one of the requirements of this. We have to present a resolution to their board to be accepted. And after they accept that resolution, there's a 90-day waiting period. So we're anticipating October 1st to be very, very soon as we can begin the process of transferring funds over. So I wanted to point out to you tonight, there were a couple of corrections in the resolutions. I just heard back from CRA today. As a matter of fact, they answered my notification that our vote was positive. So the first paragraph, we changed it to add the effective date of October 1st. We did not have that in on the first resolution, actual date. And then, we added a third paragraph just stating all of the those were the three things that we had to submit to them. The resolution with the intent to withdraw, the effective date of the withdrawal, and the employee election results. We had to have a 65% agree up 65% of the employees to agree to change plans. And we had like a 91% plan agreements from the employees. We had to have dueling meetings. We had an entire day of retirement meetings where we had employees come in and they had to listen to 30 minutes of CRA presentation and then 30 minutes of a presentation from Edward Jones. And then we had to vote the next day. So it was a, it's been a bit of a process. But we're super excited to have the employees change to Edward Jones, mainly because we want to offer our employees, you know, the opportunity to really plan for a good retirement. With CRA, once you put your money into your account, they, they didn't ever reach out to you to ask you if your money's invested where you want it or to tell you you have your money sitting in book value. It's getting 3% interest. It's been there for 20 years. Maybe you should move into something else. There was never that kind of interaction. And so we're hoping that Edward Jones, that they'll reach out to our employees and they'll have a better, a better opportunity to grow their funds so they can have a better retirement. So that's what we're hoping.
Is Edward Jones locally going to administer it?
Yes. Them and then, and One America, in conjunction with One America. So One America will be actually acting as a fiduciary agent for us now, where CRA was doing that. And then Edward Jones will be administering that speaking with all the employees to keep the funds in the right places.
And then, as you described it, is that essentially why you think people more of this instead? Was that there was more flexibility in how your money was discussed?
Yes, that and the fact that CRA is not, they don't have financial advisors on board. They only have what they call financial counselors. So they would come down a couple of times a year and they would be here for a day and a half approximately. And employees could sign up for 15-minute meetings with them. And they, and because they were financial advisors, they didn't really pull in your entire portfolio. So if you had a spouse, they didn't say, what are you anticipating your spouse's retirement going to be? They didn't pull any of that in. They just focused on you. And they couldn't really tell you or advise you how you should change it, where you should invest, or that kind of thing. I guess now CRA has brought some financial advisors. I think they said three or eight. But they're all up in Springs and it'll all have to be done over the phone or via Zoom or something. And people just aren't going to do that. You know, to talk up, to pick up a phone to talk about your finances. And the, the one thing that we thought was nice about Edward Jones is if somebody has they just don't want to go to a local person to discuss their finances. The great thing about Edward Jones is there's one in Rattler and there's several in Pueblo and even more in Springs. So they can go see a different advisor if they're not comfortable going to someone local. So, yeah.
I'm sorry, Eva?
Nope.
Okay.
The only question I had, I was just, I was just like on the vesting. Are they honoring the vesting?
Yes.
Okay, so it's straight across, you already vested, they are just taking you as a
Yes, and we have to, we have to sign the agreement and we can have input into all of that when we sit down to do all of that. So we'll be creating those agreements together with them. So yes, that will definitely happen.
I have no questions.
So down in the 90-day period, the threshold of 65%, and then the dueling meetings, all of those requirements, who, who, what agency provides the teeth for, for that? I mean, like
That would, that was part of all of the contract that we had with CRA.
So, so by entering into service with CRA, those provisions came along with it? Okay, and then, again, referring to all of those things, do we have to keep record of that? Or, I mean, once, once we're free or unencumbered from that, don't we do?
I can't imagine. I haven't looked to see if there's a retention schedule on that. There probably is, knowing, but you know, us, we keep everything forever.
I mean, so as, as much as is possible, I think it's always good to allow people to, you know, be in control of their own financial future. So I'm, I'm glad to hear this was so overwhelmingly positive. And I have no further questions. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Call the vote, please, on the resolution on changing the retirement plan to the pension. Shu?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. Item eight B, consideration of the bid results for the Saddle Road bypass sewer project number 09204, an award to Western Civil Contractors and Award of Bitch and Kitchen on Execution of Development Agreement with Duran Ventures Alliance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I've come to you tonight to consider the bid results for the Saddle Road bypass sewer project. Basically, what this project entails, it just isn't sort of like coming out of that Allen Dale is at capacity. There's not any additional room for any future development, potential development in that area. This was determined 27 years ago when Drylands Pacific was developing the first phase of subdivision on Peak Street. So Mr. Fernandez at that time said, we need to upsize the sewer. There's not going to be future growth or development in that area. So at that time, there was about, there was money put into escrow. And with that amount, it's about $309,000 today. And the additional funds, approximately $47,000, is going to be paid by the developer, the band, the ventures. That's where the funding for this project comes from. Western Civil was a little bitter with the project. We had five bids. It came in at $356,176.93. Anyway, with that, I, I leave questions open to you.
So, Bob, the $309,000 in escrow, that, that was earmarked for this, this type of project that couldn't be used just for any other situation?
That is correct. It was, it was earmarked for this development. Drylands Pacific basically had a performance bond at the time and that's where the money came from.
Um, and the remaining money's going to be paid by the developer, obviously?
Correct.
And then, so if everything goes according to plan, this will, will have a, basically have zero impact to the city's budget for this year?
Monetary, correct.
Does it, does it help our situation in any other capacity come from Allen Dale? I mean, is it, will it alleviate any issues that we've been experiencing otherwise?
Right now, the, the system's at capacity. We haven't, when we built Peak Street and released the, tested the sewer, it basically filled up the line with water. And then it was a hydro test. Then when they released it, one of the houses down on Nona got flooded, the basement did, because it got served. So it's basically, there's a stretch on the lower end of Nona, Regio Drive, but the sewer is nearly flat. So what it does is it, it opens up all that potential development in that area up there. As you know, we've been looking for areas in town where we have potential growth. And Yuga Rock came in and developed 11 lots subsequently after Drylands was there. But again, those 11 lots couldn't go online until this sewer upgrade was performed. So it's always been looming that needs to be done.
What about the sewer plant? What, what, if this capacity is adequate for?
We're, my understanding, we're fine. We're, we're running about 1 MGD. The plant capacity is 2 MGD. We're about 50%. I think when we start nearing 80% capacity, that's when we have to start looking at doing a, an upgrade again. But we, we're fine. We have a lot of potential capacity.
So is the, is the plant, the plant's capacity is 1 MGD? Is a discharge permit for that available, Eva?
The, the capacity is 2 MGD.
I'm sorry, 2?
It's two, but in their pay average, 1 MGD is what they're averaging right now.
And our discharge is capable of, I'm sorry, discharge permit as well?
It's been, when they did the expansion in 2000, 2001, it was upgraded to 2 MGD.
And then, just one last question if I may, Mayor. Um, what's, for this type of work, have we had, what's our previous experience with western?
Um, they, they're a knowledgeable pipe contractor. They did, my understanding is, I wasn't here, but they did the water line on Second Street. So they, they do sewer and water line excavations.
That's all the questions I have. And what's the timetable on this particular project?
We basically start, we have a development agreement that goes in front of you on the 18th of June. And we'll give word to the contractor if you guys approve it tonight, tomorrow. But it's contingent on getting the signature and approval of the development agreement on the 18th. After that, it's, I think we have 120 days. So basically, three months to get the work done. And we should be completed. Approximately 1,450-some feet of 8-inch going down Saddle Road from the intersection of Garfield, Saddle, Espinoza's at that intersection. It's down, they call it County Road. Turns and runs west down Saddle and ties in approximately where the Nantali residence is. It doesn't have to go all the way to Sanford Trail. There's one service that's interrupted at Mr. Coak's house. We have to tie him in. The rest of services are tied back into the alley on Nona. Pretty straightforward project. Been costing, you know, having to deal with open trenches and stuff for those residents that live on Nona and County Road.
The impact on service, are they going to be putting in, this is just curiosity, are they going to be putting in the pipe alongside of the other one? Where there's no interruption of service, are they getting in? Or are they going to be without service?
The existing pipe runs down the alley that's parallel to Nona. So we're basically bypassing, we're taping the flow and running it down this new system, which is down County Road and Saddle. That pipe will remain in place. It actually feeds the services. The houses that are on Nona, they, they back, they come out the rear, the rear of the lots. So that pipe has to stay in service.
Okay, so there won't be any interruption of service?
No. What it does is it takes all the, if you think about all the houses in the Allen Dale area, a few up on Reserve Fisher's Peak, up on Vista. Whatever sewer in that area, all, takes all that new sewer down. It bypasses the old system and runs into this new line.
When is the development agreement going to be loosened to?
Oh, no, I was just going to ask, probably in the event someone else, 10 years from now, wants to develop what's a sustainable capacity, if someone else wants to come in and do the same thing?
Of the plant or the system?
The system.
Oh, it, it has a lot of potential capacity because it's basically, I think they counted the houses over 200 and some houses are being taken off of the existing system. So it, it leaves a lot of potential.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
Um, when is the development agreement? When do we expect to see that?
18th, is that correct?
Yes.
I, I've had some people in the area asking me about that. So can they go to Plon's only and ask about that? Or is that not public information?
That's a Mr. Mason question.
Sorry.
So since Yuga Rock Phase 1 is what we're talking about and the Saddle Sewer was attached to that, so this is, the development agreement's actually going to replace that original agreement? So there has been approvals already. So the development agreement is going to be, I mean, hopefully next meeting to, to council. But yeah, that's
The developers are excited, it's portion of it.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I just wanted to know where we are and if we have questions about what the management are going to do.
There'll be, there'll be plenty of time.
All right. And then, I have one more question for you. That, I think they're in a typo, and I think it's RMS or whatever it is. It's 175 million. What is the actual, what is the actual?
Well, it's, it's actually not a typo. So once we receive bids, Jim Jackson, who's in the engineering department, goes through and, and takes the bid amount and extracts it. For instance, we have 1,450 feet of sewer line by the unit price. And they had a hiccup on it. That's the only one that didn't happen, the hiccup was the first contractor. That's the top numbers. So that's why you see the bid amount matches the tabulated amount in the first contractor, the whole underground.
Yeah.
But every one of them had a, basically a math there. They just, they didn't take their, they didn't check their math. And what happened is RMS, I think, had some enormous amount of per leg of foot. She multiplied it by the 1,450 and that's, it drove it up to, I don't even say the final leg.
Okay.
So that's why we, it, it was a, it's a typo, but we basically have to dim, have to show it on the bid. It's a legal document.
Right. I'm, I'm just curious, thank you.
Good answer.
So the bid amount is what the contractor put in for the bid? And then the tabulated amount is the verified amount from Jim?
Is the adjusted, yeah, that is correct.
That's the only question I have. I had other questions, but everybody asked. Anything else? Call for the vote. Do I have a motion to approve the bid results for the Saddle Road bypass sewer project?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Trahell?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Item nine, item four, here.
Just, I've been doing a lot of strategic planning lately. I met with the creative district mayor of both his creative, I'm sorry, strategic planning. And that's off to a great start. And then I'm on the advisory council for Creative Power and Creative Studios. And we're also doing strategic planning.
I have no more time.
Right.
We, we, when the, they went to our meeting and they were on a schedule for rates. We should have some results, I mean, figure money ones. There, there are three scenarios that they wanted to go with. All three of them benefited us, but two of them, they threw out so that everybody would be a fair share of reduced rates. So they'll go on the 29th of August and come back with actual figures. So it seems like it's pretty good news. So looks like we're going to be a break, yeah, it'll be a good break.
You know, since you got that award, you're going to make this proud.
Do they recognize you when you went down there?
Yeah.
Good, just wanted to make sure. We'll have the carpet.
We'll have the carpet, wait for me in the alley. I said they will have the carpet, wait for me in the alley.
I really don't have anything until Friday, but I just want to send the invitation to the senior center on June 15th, come on and see our grand opening and celebrate World Elder Youth Awareness Day.
Don't look at me while you say all this.
I was like, I just got every letter right now. So I just want to make sure, you know, just remind people, come on out, see what they're doing. The seniors are doing some great things down there. And everyone is welcome.
That's all you'll be, I think?
From 10 to 3.
From 10? Name it.
About the name of the board. Mayor, everything intends, we did have a council, a government's meeting. There, recently, we've been having some, a lot of activity in Alphano County. Obviously, it's a two-county agency. I did want to mention, since it somewhat ties into manager report there, that, that we're starting construction of a new senior citizen center in Walsenburg. It's going to be really nice, a super-nice amenity for the people there. And that's, that's sort of going to bring the services that COG offers in the local area up to even standard the same all the way around. So I think, I think that's important. Another thing I would mention, and I think is really important, is that COG is going to be really spearheading at stack meetings the need for an extra transportation in regional planning zone so that we don't lose our representation here. As that develops, I'll, I'll keep you guys posted. Hopefully, it happens through a legislative process and because if, if it happens that way, it'll, it'll benefit everyone throughout the state without causing other people to pay by losing, losing their representation. So I think, I think that's important. Brian Blazey's going to stay on the spearhead of that. But that's, that's the report that I have. I have another question.
Sure.
How's the takeover at the committee center, I mean, our senior citizen here? How's that working? Um, you know what? From every report I've heard, I think pretty well. I mean, there's some minor discrepancies. I mean, you know, you're not going to make all the people happy all of the time. But for the most part, I think, it's my understanding that the vast majority of people that use those services are finding it to be a refreshing change. And I, I think as I go into it further, they'll, they'll find even more benefits as they realize the potential to use the funds that they accrued over the years without having a negative impact to the operation of their facility. So honestly, I think it's a, a really good, good time over there. And it's definitely on the, on the increase of people are enjoying it. That's my understanding.
I have a question. Where's the funding coming for, thrown for the Walsenburg senior citizen?
Uh, the majority of it was from COVID relief funds. And then the remainder of it is from some grants. So, and also, we benefited openly through those funds. I, I don't have that just at readily available to me now. I can, I can bring it next meeting. But there, there are funds that we've already expanded. It took a while to get to where we are extending the funds for Alphano County because of some trouble with the design process and getting the moves, all the needed hurdles to start the build process. So it's a little late in coming, but it's going to be well worth it.
So when you have your COG news, this is just my information. So you actually address the issues on both counties at the same time?
Yes, absolutely. And then, that's why the, there's an elected official, or two elected officials from, from each county, there's a county commissioner level, and then some sort of city leadership, and all voting members, and then at-large member, who's Bud Gross from the Kim area, so. And he's, he's been on that board for a lot of years. And what's nice about Bud is he's pretty equal and fair, because he's in administration of the counties. So yeah, it's a, a good agency.
I know your meeting is last Monday.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of items to report. Mr. Ruger and I attended a meeting here at City Hall, actually in, in council chambers. Representatives from C DOT were here on the twenty-third of when, I believe it was the, it was after our meeting, discussing exit fourteen, Steph was here as well. We were taught, they wanted a firm commitment from the city on what option we wanted for exit fourteen. So because we had a consensus with city council some months ago, I don't know if you remember option two. But that's what we have decided and confirmed to C DOT that that, that's what we're going to do. So after that verbal commitment that that's what we want, then Jennifer Sparks and Shane Ferguson, he's the head of our region here, gonna start the design process for that option two. And I don't remember who asked the question, but we have a five million dollar budget for that exit. So when, even though C DOT does the design in-house, they're, they're estimating that the design would be between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. But C DOT, that still comes out of our five million dollar budget. It looks like it's, it's coming to fruition. Aaron and I were at the home opener of the Triggers Saturday night, and I personally got a lot of compliments on the stadium. There were people that actually came up and thanked me, and I'm sure there were a couple that thanked you as well. Some guy used a, not too good word, but it was fricking great. It is, I mean, everybody was just really excited, and Mr. Just had the honors of throwing out the first page.
Nice, how'd he do, did he hit it in the dirt?
He, it was a ball, but it wasn't bad.
He made it across the plate?
He didn't embarrass, he did a great job, so, and the announcer thanked him for his role in his central project. Also, I got a call from Linda Baron about the July fourth parade that they, you know, they have the, it's called the Drive Parade and the Red Parade. So the Drive Parade, usually Fort Carson participates in that, but Linda was really excited because General Doyle, who is in charge of Fort Carson, the whole entire facility, is going to be here in Trinidad, and she said of all the years that she's been doing things with the military coming to Trinidad, this is the first time we're gonna have a general.
Wow.
So she wants to do something a little bit extra. So that's why I, I've talked to Steve already, and I'd like to have a couple of better participation from the city. And I was asking my fellow city council members if you would be interested in riding on the trolley and Steph as well, put the trolley in the parade. Steve was talking about putting our new fire engine in there, and so it's, it's an honor that General Doyle is coming down here, so. If, let me know if you want to participate.
Yeah.
We did the military appreciation parade, so I think it'll be really nice. And also, by popular demand, I'm asking all of you, what items you want for our work session? Anybody?
I, I have something I'd like to request. It's been, it's been successful in several other municipalities, and it's my understanding there's some grants available for it. And when you look at it, sure, it takes effort on everybody's part and some expenditure of money, but I do think it'd be helpful that we have an ordinance that would help motivate people to try and bear proof trash cans in some capacity, and I, I know it's only a start, but I think it'd be really helpful, so I, I'd like to see that, and I mean, we should at least discuss it, I know there's a lot of moving parts, the dump, there's a big moving part of that, I mean, that's obviously really hard to bear proof, I imagine, but, you know, you start the longest journey with the first step, so I'd like to see that.
Okay. Even do you have any others?
One of us, what he says, to give back to the notification. We wanted people for keeping their yard in mind, taking pride in their neighborhood, you know. It used to be popular back in the day, I don't know, do y'all remember that, was, you know, certain neighborhoods, you'd see the plaques on their yard and they won the notification award for their, you know, it was like, we need to get back to something like that.
Yeah.
The thing is, some of the areas that have, I don't even know how to phrase this, but some of the parts of where we've gone, we've figured a way that, where we've cut out for doing some utility work, like actually getting paved, because right now, the dirt is just coming out, people are bottoming out, and I got another concern about spray painted signs, but they're not spray painted, like the street signs are completely gone, like they're just silver. Like on, on the north side of town, I was really shocked because they weren't painted, and then I went to go check them out, they're just silver, like they've just gone, like all they leave is gone. Still. And then.
You're talking about the street signs?
Street signs, yeah. Yeah, so the sign is there, it's just silver, which is weird.
Really gone.
Yeah, and then it's possible.
Oh, I think, I think we need to get a, get in with Matty too, but part of it, I think we need to get a, a work session on update on projects and stuff that, that we really need to find out what's going on, and maybe even add a few projects, see if we can get things a little more cleaned up in town, and hopefully we can get, I don't wanna pick on anybody, but we were supposed to have a list of, of, hey, we, we had a ramp gum.
I want to just, for everybody's, I mentioned, maybe the department heads can also be at the next work session.
Okay.
Or retreats. Maybe, I know it's just, there may be the eradication of the mosquitoes now with the dirt, the sun, the spraying, but it's pretty much.
I'm second to what she said about worrying and updating all the projects and what they've been placed out to be, I'm a little familiar with Orphan Hill, I'd like to know what's going on with this office and the, and the national search, please do.
Yes, okay.
Mayor, I add one more if I may.
No, good.
I, I let go through one.
Yeah.
It's quick. I think it'd be worthwhile to have, I don't, I don't know what the title would be, but some discussion, or at least an update, at a minimum, an update, to see where we are with the people that came in with concerns about vagrants living in the House on God in particular, but for that type of situation that happens throughout town, I think that.
Just an FYI, Steve gave us that update in an email on Friday.
Okay, I probably didn't even get it in line.
It's, and that specific house is on.
And then, okay, and then also, I mean, it helpful, it'd be helpful to have that in the public purview as well.
Could be.
Yeah. Uh, that's it.
Alrighty. Item ten, reports by city manager and city attorney. Mr. Ruger.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council for letting me be remote tonight, but I'm glad I could be here with you, yes. I wanna start with, I did send a report of our mitigation for A N O efforts and, excuse me, and some of our, our efforts to, to really make Trinidad look great, so I'd encourage the council to look at that, and Councilmember Williamson, point well taken, that is something that we will work to get out to the public as well, because I'm very proud of the work that our building inspection department is doing, and really our development services team to, to really take pride in our community and work through these tough issues. We are bringing forward to you, you saw it on tonight's agenda, a twenty-five thousand dollar request to do demolition, so we can bring the process of actually removing some of these houses that are problematic, and so we'll have future discussions with that, with you all, as to which houses we wanna identify and see what we can do to continue making our, our community beautiful. The mayor talked about the two issues that I had on my list, but I do wanna congratulate all of us for just such a success with Central Park, I got to go out there Friday to, to see it, and met Ken Schultz out there right when some of the Triggers were arriving in town, and personally got to witness the faces on some of the players and, and their big smiles, they were very impressed with what we've done, and I think it's, it's a huge success for the Triggers, but the community as a whole. And I'm excited to have conversations with you all about how we can use that facility for more than just baseball, and have that be such a shining star for our community. Wanted to mention just one quick thing on exit fourteen, we are working forward with the exit realignment, as the mayor mentioned, and I think that's, that's a positive step. We're also exploring how we can really beautify and make exit, or not exit fifteen, but the, the Five Points area, really a shining star as part of that project, so we'll bring some discussions to you all with that. And then, lastly, I just wanted to, again, thank all of our staff who are working on Santa Fe Trail Days, that's this weekend, it should be an outstanding event, and we don't really have a full team of events planners or anything like that, so the, the, the production is really coming from people volunteering their time outside of their normal duties, and I, I don't want that to go unnoticed, because it's gonna be a spectacular event, so many people have pitched in, we have a lot of people who are gonna volunteer from city staff to assist, in fact, we're engaging our lifeguards from the community center to come in and help us with helping out with entrances and that type of thing, so we think it's gonna be a fun, amazing event, I would encourage everyone to show out. Al Burkina Jr.'s gonna be there, and it should just be so amazing, and looking forward to all of that. So that's my report, and thank you guys again for accommodating me remotely tonight, I'll be back tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Downs.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly, I, I was gonna mention Santa Fe Trail Days, and I, you know, this is the first year that the city is doing this, so we hope to have a very big event. It coincides on Friday night with the Art Trek that they have the first Friday of every month during the summer, so that, that should be exciting, and we hope we'll have a good turnout for the Santa Fe Trail Days. The only other thing I wanted to say was that regarding the, the ball field for the Triggers, I just wanna let everybody know that the upper parking lot is open now, it was closed for the entire time that the construction was going on, and as a result, I think people like quit trying to park up there, so that parking is now available. But also, the Triggers, I guess, at home are now three and O, which is kind of exciting, they were oh and three, but now they're three and three, so they're three games in a row. It's my understanding, this morning, and maybe for the time this has been going on, or the season has been going on at home, they've been putting on a camp for youth baseball players in the community, it's been incredibly well received, and, and the, the kids are loving learning baseball from the Triggers, and that's been really, but that's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For staff and council, our next regular meeting is June eighteenth, will we, will everybody be here, or will they be at C M L? Will we, is that gonna be a problem, you think, Governor?
Well, it's a Tuesday night, it depends, I don't need the answer for Audrey, it depends on where you're going.
Yeah.
I, Steve, I don't know when Steve is leaving for, for C M L.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, Tuesday for C M L is actually just kind of the registration day, so I am actually planning to be in Trinidad that evening, and then I will head out on, or Wednesday morning. So I don't see that being a conflict, we have a couple of council members going, I think the mayor, Councilmember Trillo is going, Councilmember Ogultry, are you attending as well?
I haven't left on it.
Okay.
But I will.
But I think we'll have a forum, and we, I'll, I'll have conversations individually with the council members involved, but I plan to be there, and I, I think we can proceed as business as usual, as far as I can tell at this point.
Alrighty, thank you. Item eleven, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Tabono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes. Williamson?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Thank you.